Eminente Tzentsai Saisneli Hesatun Guam is back in session. We are on second reading, Bill Number 213-36-COR. Senators Sin Augustine, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to accept Bill Number 213-36 as substituted on the floor. Introduced by myself, an act to add a new subsection A to Section 8119 of Article 1, Chapter 8, Title 12, Guam Code Annotated, relative to establishing an exemption to the Guam Power Authority for the construction of the new 41-megawatt Cabras Ultra sulfur diesel units on Lot 261 and 257 U.S. Navy Appra Harbor reservations. Madam Speaker and to my colleagues, the substitute is the legal, after the legal review, we made the appropriate amendments that meets all legal requirements.
On the motion to accept the substitute version, the substitute on-the-floor version, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senators Sin Augustine, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill Number 213-36-COR as substituted on the floor on the third reading floor, and I would like to discuss it.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and colleagues. This bill will give our only power generating entity, the GPA, with the authority, the authority to build a cleaner ultra-low sulfur diesel power generation facility within the footprint of GPA property that sits about 1,300 feet close to Jose Rios Middle School. This facility will augment the building of the new power plant, power facility in the Ukodu area in which GPA and GIDA teams are now negotiating at the market for the refinancing we recently authorized. They're currently doing that refinancing. The new PD facility will also be utilized primarily as a backup for services, especially for families and businesses in the south, at times when their generating facilities are down. Our power partners at GPA have said on many occasions that the release of dirty air from the use of the ultra-low sulfur diesel will be much less than that of the current GPA plants running at Cabras. Our family and friends who utilize Jose Rios Middle School have also participated in discussions on this project, and the mayor of PD and the municipal planning council had offered their blessing and support on this project. Today, on behalf of the GPA community, in support of their work, to use cleaner fuel and new, and move forward toward a much greener Guam, I ask for your support and vote to pass Substitute Bill 213 so that we can see Guam move forward and be part of the solution to ensuring proper adequate power resource of right to our people. Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker.
Sisus Massey, Senators Sin Augustine. On the bill, is there anyone who'd like to be recognized on the bill? Senator Brown, you are recognized on the bill.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. With regards to Bill 213, I don't have any objections to the bill, but I also want to ensure, Madam Speaker, that with regards to the operation of this new plant that GPA is requesting to have our authorization to construct, the main issue of concern with regards to the construction at Cabras certainly originally when the new power plant was proposed a few years ago, was the fact that Cabras would be fully shut down and we would not have to deal with the issues of continued operation of GPA at the Cabras location. This is obvious concern because of the past history that the residents of PD, including the Port Authority of Guam, have had to deal with regards to emissions from Cabras. A few years ago, we had an incident, it's not the only time that this has happened, where we had emissions from the PD power plant when they brought back up their base load generator. And at the time, the port had an operation that was ongoing, and six employees, which were crane operators of the Port Authority, had to be taken to the Guam Memorial Hospital as a result of inhaling this discharge of what was not acceptable levels of air quality that was emitted from the Cabras power plant. And as a result of further review and investigation from the port, it was determined that particular afternoon, it's actually just a few days before Christmas, that the GPA had brought back up their base load, and that's what contributed to the problem. And so we understand the concern that was raised with regards to the school, the adjacent school, and we want to ensure the safety and well-being of the children, the residents, and certainly everyone else, including the private carriers and other companies that work at Cabras Island. And so I'm offering amendment, Madam Speaker, I know that Legos currently working on it. I want to require, even though I believe Guam EPA should already be doing so, that even though, and I appreciate the fact that GPA has brought forth that they are bringing a new power plant and that they need it in order to meet the requirements of the construction of the new power plant up north, I do want to want to put in law that they are required to put in monitoring stations to ensure that they are meeting air quality standards. And certainly, if there's any issue, they need to immediately address their operations to ensure they're not discharging anything that's going to adversely affect the quality of life of any of the surrounding residents or people that work in that particular area. And I understand it's a new plant, I understand they've come forth and said, well, it's low sulfur diesel that we're going to be using, much cleaner fuel, we're not going to have the same issues and concerns. Because the whole reason this issue came up with regards to the distance requirements that were put in law had to deal with the construction in Dedido. At the time, when we were dealing with blackouts on Guam with regards to power, because we could not address the capacity at the time, back in the 90s, early 90s, they had to, they had to build a power facility up there in Dedido, in Harmon, next to the school, next to the elementary school. And obviously, there's a lot of concern by the residents, by the parents, by the teachers and faculty members of our elementary school up there in Harmon with regards to air quality. And that's why the particular, if you didn't know, there's, that's the reason that initiated the whole process almost 30 years ago, with regards to why there is this requirement for distance that was put in place, why we don't want a power plant constructed within so many feet of a, of a school. And so certainly, with the evolution of modern technology and the ability to address these issues, we're able to have power plants operate safer and certainly meet air quality standards. And I'm sure the new plant would need to meet that with the requirements. But we remember back in the days when we were talking about GPA having scrubbers installed, because there was such concern about the quality of emissions that were being issued. And we've seen the outcome. I mean, you can paint the port today, and within a year, you're going to see the gray surface that's going to fall everywhere out there in that area. And that doesn't just the port, I mean, there's a lot of other private businesses that operate that are support entities of the Port Authority and are working in the marine area. So we want to address that, we want to make sure that everybody's safe. And I understand now the requirement of why GPA needs the authorization to construct this new facility at Cabras, even though my ultimate desire was to see Cabras be fully shut down. Then it would never be an issue of concern, but if it has to be constructed in order to address permitting requirements, then by all means, I think they also should incumbently be required to consistently, consistently monitor and address air quality on their part and provide those respective reports to Guam EPA as the regulatory agency. So if you give me a few minutes, Madam Speaker, I know Legos working on that amendment, unless any one of our other colleagues certainly have any further comments, if you'll allow me to come back to propose that amendment. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
All right, thank you. We will hold your time, and we will proceed with other speakers on the bill. Is there any other senator who would like to be recognized on the bill? Senator Duñez, you are recognized.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, and I certainly rise in support of Bill 213-36. And I want to, first of all, thank the chairman of the committee for moving this forward and getting this time-sensitive bill onto the floor, and of course, the author for working very closely with a number of us colleagues together to ensure that this time-sensitive bill hits the floor. First of all, I want to appreciate my colleague, Senator Brown, for her proposal in meetings with the, you know, the director or general manager, I guess, of GPA as it's called, JB, as well as now acting Tracy Limtiaco. You know, we attended, myself and several of our colleagues, attended a number of presentations by GPA, really going through a thorough description of how this is necessary and what this particular plan in, in keeping together this current procurement that was put forward to build a new state-of-the-art facility and all of the benefits it will bring along, what, why this is so important. And in that conversation, as I was appreciating my colleague, JB said that, you know, he has no issues with putting monitoring requirements in the area for air quality into the bill. But Madam Chair, I wanted to just once again emphasize, first of all, the time sensitiveness of passing this bill now as GPA is on the market for refinancing a bill, you know, Bill 212 that we passed last month that authorized this, and really to continue to keep on pace with the construction of a badly needed power plant, new power plant and ultra-low sulfur for proper emissions, as well as just economic benefits going forward. But you know what was also brought out once again, and we go back to the public hearing, you know, there was a lot of warning signals that were sent to us by the PUC as well as CCU members, that this is, this procurement and what we're doing is so critical at this point. And the ability to build that redundant system of the 41 megawatts down in PD is, is, is twofold really, in terms of solving an issue that they have with their current footprint, as well as ensuring that the system has strong redundancy, ensuring that that 41 megawatts, as the author, Senator Sin Augustine said, which will serve southern residents and the southern half of the island, as really the strong backup generation and daily generation, if needed, to augment the renewables and a lot of the efforts that GPA has put in place in order to really, in the coming years, build a state-of-the-art system that's going to last for decades to come. And so with all of that, Madam Speaker, I want to appreciate all of our colleagues who have spent the time and done the work and going and sitting down with the GPA officials, and especially once again, the very exhaustive public hearing that was held on this bill, and really all of the, the membership of PUC as well as CCU impressing upon us the absolute necessity of having to provide for this waiver, provide for this 41 megawatts as a redundant system, and provide for the opportunity for this project to move forward as procured. So for that reason, Madam Speaker, once again, I do support this bill, but once again, I'm going to support the amendment proffered by Senator Brown as well. That has been vetted once again, like I said, with management. I think it's important that we put language in that puts that at least one final layer of, of security for knowing that other than the way that they will construct this plant, the way that the tower will be constructed and the emissions as well monitored, that there is one more bit of redundancy to let the people of PD know and the association with the school, that we care about air quality and everything that may affect the surrounding area. So with that, Madam Speaker, thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts and my support for 213-36. Sisus Massey.
Sisus Massey, Senator. On the bill, is there any senator who'd like, oh, sorry, Vice Speaker, you are recognized on the bill.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, General Manager, Sisus, to you and to my colleagues. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to rise and speak in support of this legislation. And as I heard the retiring speakers, I too also support the efforts of the monitoring and the amendment that the good senator from Chalampago was proposing. Madam Speaker, this Bill 213-36 is to give the Guam Power Authority an exemption pertaining to the provisions of banning the construction of power plants in excess of 1 megawatt and utilizing fossil fuels within that 1,500 feet of a school. I want to say that pursuant to that 12 GCA, Section 8119, no generators are with a, with the capacity in excess of 1 megawatt and using fossil fuels is allowed. And this bill would give that, will give the Guam Power Authority an exemption. I know that the land is within the Cabras industrial area, and that was, that land was deeded by the Navy in 1976, so I believe that in order for us to abide by the consent decree from U.S. EPA and U.S. Department of Justice, knowing that the power plant and the consent decree that must be followed, the timeline of 2024, may not be supported if this exemption is not provided and that, that deadline again is within the next couple of years. So I support the efforts. I know that the PD Municipal Planning Council had been provided a presentation to its residents, and in the ultimate end, the PD Municipal Planning Council did issue a letter supporting the bill and for the granting of this exemption. And again, you know, it's, the awareness and presentation was provided, and I think that this is truly needed. And of course, when you have to meet deadlines, we want to make sure that we don't violate the consent decree. So I support the efforts and thank Senator Joe Sin Augustine for reaching out and asking me to support the efforts, but also sharing with me the process on, on how we wanted to pursue this. So Sisus Massey, and I support the efforts and ask my colleagues to help support the same. Sina Massey.
Sina Massey. On the bill, is there anyone else who would like to speak on the bill? If not, then we'll take a two-minute recess. Senator Sin Augustine, you have a point of information?
No, Madam Speaker. I just wanted to state that, number one, I support the amendment that Senator Brown is going to be, is going to be submitting, in supporting of the monitoring, because we want to make sure when the power plant does go up, the monitoring is in place and is ensured.
All right, we'll come back on that amendment after a five-minute recess.
floor and uploaded to the drive. So Senator Brown, you have the floor on the amendment.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. The amendment that I'm offering is on line 14, page 2, and I'll be to add a subsection B to the bill to read. GPA shall be required to comply with the air quality and emissions limitations contained in the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency Clean Air Act of 1990, Chapter 85 of Title 42, United States Code, Section 7401. Clean Air Act. GPA shall install air quality monitors or such other devices specified in the Clean Air Act necessary to measure air quality emissions from the 41-megawatt diesel units constructed at lots 261 and 257 and ensure compliance with the Clean Air Act. I offer this amendment, Madam Speaker, because I think we need to be mindful, of course. I think we're all as concerned in wanting to ensure the health and welfare of our residents that are in PD and those that work there. And certainly also allow the Guam Power Authority to be able to build their northern plant so that we can properly address the management of power resources on the island. You know, I give all the credit to John Beneventi. He's pretty much, I don't think anyone has served as long in a leadership capacity in any other government agency in the history of the government of Guam than John Beneventi. And gosh, it's been over 30 years since I actually worked with him. At the time, we had to deal with massive load shedding on the island back in the early 1990s when I was at Guam EPA to be able to address the permitting of fast-track generators. There was a time we even had to travel to Region 9 in San Francisco together to be able to get the requirements and for GPA to meet the requirements to be able to move forward. It was a very chaotic time. It's very difficult to plan properly when you're operating during a time of chaos. And we have the opportunity today to properly plan and move forward with the construction of a new facility that will be able to provide for the power generation needs of our people for many years into the future, including incorporating environmentally sound and sustainable sources of energy. And so I'm very supportive of that. But I want to read a letter that was sent to GPA in the Guam Legislature almost 30 years ago. And this had to do, as I mentioned earlier, with regards to the Harmon Loop Elementary School. And at the time, GPA had constructed a generator nearby that caused a lot of issues with emissions. And this little student that was named Dusty at the time, there was a student there, wrote what I thought was a very appropriate message, and still a very appropriate message for us to listen to today, to be mindful of this. And it said, Dear Senators and GPA, please try to do something about that generator. I need clean air. The air is very, very smoky. Harmon Loop Elementary School. Do good. And certainly, I believe, Madam Speaker, that today, that's our objective. Technology has improved substantially. Our ability to monitor emissions has improved substantially. So that we can be able to address the power generation needs of our island, but more importantly, also while we're doing that, ensure the health and safety of our community, which is paramount. And I believe, Madam Speaker, this amendment and this requirement, which I'm sure GPA will comply with, is critically important so that the concerns that have been raised by the community can be properly addressed and so we don't have incidences, as we've had in the past, where our people have suffered from the lack of clean air and the degradation of our air quality. So with that, Madam Speaker, I offer this amendment and hope my colleagues will concur and add this amendment to the bill. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be able to offer this amendment.
Thank you very much. On the amendment, is there anyone, Senator Tuanis, on the amendment?
This is Massey, Madam Speaker. I just will brief on my comments. Certainly rise in full support of the amendment. I would expect nothing less from my good colleague, Senator Brown, having served at EPA and have really led a lot of efforts when it comes to taking care of our environment and doing the best that we can to ensure not only air quality, water quality, and just the general quality of life on island. So very thankful for this amendment. It makes sense, and I think it makes the bill stronger. So with that, Madam Speaker, thank you for the opportunity to rise in full support of this amendment. This is Massey.
When Povetsu, Senator Tuanis, anyone else wishing to speak on the amendment? Speaker Therese Terlai, I will recognize you at that time, and then I'll recognize Senator Perez.
Speaker, if we could take a, sorry again, colleagues, but a one-minute recess to confirm that the documents are on the drive. We seem to be having some technical issues. Thank you.
Ymina Chantais, President of the National Assembly, is back from recess at this time. I'll go ahead and recognize Senator Perez. On the amendment, as proffered by Senator Juwan Brown, please proceed.
This is Massey, Madam Speakers. Bill 213 proposes to exempt GPA from the prohibition of building a fossil fuel plant within 1,500 feet of a school pursuant to Guam law. You know, once again, this community is faced with a similar decision, but now under the pressure of a consent decree that requires GPA to construct a 180-megawatt power plant utilizing ultra-low sulfur diesel via date originally set at October of 2022. Ratepayers already absorbed the fine of $400,000 due to GPA's pass and continuing violations under Section 112 of the Clean Air Act. If GPA does not comply, the ratepayers could be faced with hundreds of thousands of dollars in additional fines. And these fines will be borne by ratepayers already faced with the rising cost of power tied to the rising cost of fuel. If not the consent decree, power generation limitations of the aging caverns went into that our community predominantly relies upon for energy from our hospitals to our homes, schools, businesses, is a serious consideration. So what does this compliance mean? To be in compliance to the national ambient air quality standards allows for the release of sulfur dioxide up to 75 parts per billion for up to one hour each year. The question is, is this standard sufficient to protect the children's health and those vulnerable populations living and working in close proximity? One can argue the 41-megawatt power plant will burn cleaner. But is this what we truly need for our community? Is this a change that we really are seeking? In addition, there were some unanswered questions as to why the 41-megawatt power plant is now needed when GPA was committed to building the 180-megawatt power plant in Dedido to address noncompliance to the Clean Air Act, the projected energy needs of our island, and in an location on higher ground that is protected from storm surges, sea level rise, and tsunamis. It was reported that the decision to construct the 41-megawatt was incidental to missteps in obtaining the necessary source permits. USCP sets the environmental quality standards and authorizes Guam EPA to perform permitting on its behalf. USCP allows up to 75 parts per billion of sulfur dioxide for up to one hour each year. In contrast, TENGCA defines a major source of air pollution as 100 tons per year or more of any air pollutant belonging to a single major industrial grouping, including five fugitive emissions, as established to a single major industrial grouping, including five fugitive emissions, as established by administrator by rule. And 22GAR sets the regulations. By seeking a major source permit, KEPCO is seeking authorization to reduce pollution in amounts higher than the limits GPA wanted to maintain. And these unanswered questions add to the community misgivings of KEPCO's environmental record at the solar farm at Marbo in Orasasun Valley and at Cabris 4. Additionally, sea level rise due to climate change is real. Low-lying Pacific island nations are in dialogue with nations for access agreements for possible relocation. Closer to home, we are seeing our coastal areas eroding. Concerning new evidence indicates that climate change may be exacerbated by the melting of permafrost and the resulting release of methane gas, a more potent greenhouse gas that was not previously factored into global temperatures. And this could potentially impact the structural integrity and functionality of the proposed 41-megawatt power plant and the investment tied up with it. Other considerations are opportunity cost. Renewable energy is fast becoming cost competitive, especially in light of the rising cost of fuel. The opportunity cost of not investing in renewable energy development and infrastructure today globally has been estimated to be $2.7 billion. What is the opportunity cost for Guam, considering the level of poverty in our community? Is there a third option that addresses all these constraints and does an opportunity exist? GPA claims that the consent decree is requiring them to build, requiring them to build a power plant when the consent decree is a negotiated agreement. US EPA wants compliance with air standards, so GPA comes up with a plan to comply and gets their approval. The amended consent decree is proof that this is a negotiated process. So it's been GPA's position that there is a need for a fossil fuel burning plant to stabilize fluctuations from solar generation. However, the time to rethink this position is now, with the Biden administration prioritizing addressing climate change and environmental justice. I think there are too many uncertainties, and I'm worried that we might be rushing into another misstep in granting this very extraordinary exemption to GPA and KEPCO. Situs Massey.
Thank you, Senator Perez. On the amendment, as proffered by Senator Brown, Speaker Terlaye, I'll recognize you at this time.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I support the amendment. It does, however, I want to acknowledge that the previous speaker's points are excellent, that the EPA standards are really the minimum that we can expect, right? I think even without this amendment, I would be shocked if GPA was going to proceed without those, because after all, this all began because we were under consent decree for violating Clean Air Standards down in PD, down at Cabris. And they convinced us that we wanted to move the plant away from that area and put it up at Ukudu. And, you know, all the plans that went with it, and this has gone on for years. And I especially agree with the point that all of a sudden, we are in a rush, and we have a March 31 deadline that we, the legislature, must comply with for an over $600 million project. I just feel like somebody dropped the ball somewhere on this thing. And I don't think that was the legislature, because I looked at the records, and we received this, and there was a hearing had in about three months of when the bill was received. There was a, you know, we've got it on the floor now. And, but really, I just, I just think, you know, when we are given, like, these are our only options. I want to point out that at the public hearing, this is one of those issues that, you know, there were two types of testimony. One was what the previous speaker highlighted, that there are other ways to do this. There are safer ways, you know, why are we not doing those ways? And it's health and environmental concerns should outweigh every other concern. That's what they presented to us. So we asked GPA, and the other, the other side was, it's either this, or we are going to load shed the people of Guam. That was the threat. And I don't take lightly to that, because, you know, Arman Amco, my father, you know, all of that generation, they lived, we lived, but they especially lived through load shedding. They do not want to see that. And their feeling, I'm sure, is, you get this done, no matter what you have to do, because we are not going backwards to load shedding, right? And so I totally agree with that as well. But I just don't think that we need to be threatened with load shedding and deadlines that, on a $600 million project, that really should have been foreseen in the start. They came and tried to convince us that this was the best way now to do this, the best way. Well, then why wasn't that the first way, right? When they were hashing out this $600 million plan, why didn't they come up with this, the best way, in the beginning? This more environmentally feasible way, this more cover the southern end of the island way, this more, you know, flexible way, all of those things that they told us. And so, you know, I hear them. And if, if all those things are true, then of course, I agree. We should do it this way. It's just very surprising to me, and I don't like the notion that we get, you know, threatened at the end, oh, by the way, you have a March 31 deadline, or the whole deal falls through, the entire deal falls through, and all of the work, all of the weight that the people of Guam, all of the promises scrapped. That pretty much is, you know, hard for me to get my head around, I'll tell you that. But as for this amendment, that we are going to require that this plant down in PD follows the EPA Clean Air Act, that they monitor the air, absolutely. That should be the minimum. At the public hearing, this is one of the specific questions I asked GPA. You hear the, you hear the community, they're concerned about health and safety. Why can't you give us something in writing that guarantees their health and safety if you think it's so safe? Why can't you give that to us in writing? Why can't you give us what EPA says about this power plant that you're going to build in PD? Why can't you give that to us? So that we can ourselves feel confident, and we can help the people of our community to also feel confident, and that, you know, we're not just blindly following, despite the credible people that work at GPA. I'm not questioning them, but I'm questioning this tactic of coming to the legislature with nothing, no proof, no, nothing for us and our community to rely on as to the health and safety. And we are going to rely on the EPA. We have always relied on the EPA. We are under consent decree because the EPA found us in violation. And we are paying millions of dollars to fix that. And our community is paying millions of dollars to fix that. So they better comply with the EPA. But I would, I would have hoped that they would have taken into account some of the testimonies that were also presented at the hearing and given us something more, right? Been the one to brought this forward, you know, to tell us what the standards are going to be, and what the science says, that, that if we follow EPA standards, those kids in that school are not going to get sick, right? I told them, just give that to us in writing. I will take that. And so I'm still deliberating on this bill. We do not want to see load shedding. There's no way we're going to go back to that. And we expect GPA, but I do expect GPA when they are also dealing, you know, with the public's health and safety, that they, that they bring as much information as they can forward. I understand they're back in the States right now, trying to get the bond refinanced. They're not here for us today to answer these questions. But those were the questions that were posed at the public hearing. So I appreciate the amendment. I support the amendment. But I also, I also support all those people who came in and testified that EPA standards have been found nationwide to be minimum. And if there was anything more that GPA could have done, I wish that they would have presented those to us as options as well. Situs Massey, Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome, Madam Speaker. Anyone else on the amendment? Senator Telotidegui, I will recognize you at this time. Please proceed.
Situs Massey, Madam Speaker, and good morning to my colleagues. Madam Speaker, I stand in full support of this amendment. I attended the public hearing. I read every press release that came out. I remember when the consent decree happened back in, but almost 10 years now. It's been quite, quite some time regarding the PD power plant and the emissions that was putting out in the skies that were actually, you know, not in compliance with the air quality emissions standard. So the first question I asked during this public hearing was based solely on the emissions, and to ensure that anything coming out of this generator will not harm the community, or especially the school. And that brings us back to the whole reason why they're complying now because of the consent decree by both US EPA as well as the Department of Justice, that they have to put all these in place by 2024, my colleagues, 2024. That's not too far away. In the 30th Guam Legislature, I introduced legislation that requires that there should be no more importing of ultra-low sulfur diesel fuel into this island, that we'd be forced to use ultra-low sulfur diesel to stay away from heavy oils and gases and emissions that damage our environment and our health. And here we are today, finally, moving forward with equipment. I mean, we've already, we've already changed out the ambulances, the buses, that were all using diesel fuel, and now using ultra-low diesel fuel. And one of them, most especially, and the reason why I wrote that legislation, was the generator up in Dedido that was talked about. See, an engine, even though it runs on diesel, can also run on ultra-low sulfur diesel. But you can't do the same when it's an ultra-low sulfur diesel engine cannot use diesel. So things are changing. Equipments are changing and complying. This 40 watt, this 41-megawatt, I was told, is going to only be used 3% of the year, 3% of the year. Sounds to me like they're only going to use it, you know, absolutely sparingly, but use it when they have to switch from one engine to another, or when they're turning off the plant and re-establishing the other plant. 3% of the year, this is going to be on. That's what we were told. The location, from what I gathered, too, was based on the south. And it made it more convenient in the, in the south, because if they lose power, this megawatt generator would assist them. And we all know that the south doesn't have the infrastructure as the north does, or even as central has. If the first people who get load shedded, or the first person during a, a storm that loses power, it's in the south. So we were told that this is going to assist the south. But like I said, from the very beginning of this public hearing, my concern was of the air quality that's coming out for everybody in that area. So I really, I stand in support. I'm so, so happy that, you know, Senator Brown introduced this, this amendment, because it will bring comfort to many of us and many of the families that send their children to Jose Reyes, knowing that this is in there. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome, Senator Tadegui. If there are no one else wishing to speak, Senator Brown, would you like to close, or Senator Brown, would you like to close on the amendment?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I recognize there are a lot of different perspectives with regards to this issue. And certainly, I do have an expectation that, that GPA will comply with the Clean Air Standards. And I have the expectation, more importantly, that Guam PA will ensure, you know, fulfill their regulatory role and ensure that GPA is meeting those standards. We're challenged with all of these issues, but at the same time, we want to ensure consistent and reliable power to our people. There's a need to do that. Our economy and our growth and our sustainability are based upon the, upon the work of GPA to provide that power. We've lived through the chaos. And the chaos was a very expensive, not just the inconvenience of dealing with inconsistent power and people's refrigerators and air conditioners being damaged every time the power went on and off as a result of load shedding, the impact to our businesses. But our overall quality of life on Guam was affected by it. Our economic stability at the time, when we had what we used to refer to as the Guam birds down there in Tumon, when the cranes were up and the massive construction that happened, largest amount of construction that happened on Guam since World War II. And it was a very financially costly experience for our people. They ended up paying more and more as a result of the lack of planning, the lack of foresight, political intervention of obviously wanting to keep the rates low, which ultimately cost the people so much more money, because we had to scramble with the construction of, remember the fast-track generators? Not only were they expensive to purchase at the last minute and install, but to operate them, to buy the fuel for them was exceedingly expensive. We recognize in time that with the development of technology and the desire of our, our people, including our young people, to want to ensure a safer, environmentally sensitive world, because we see how much destruction that our presence here has contributed to the degradation of our environment, not just on our small island, but worldwide. I think, you know, we all recognize, I certainly do, the issue of climate change and the impact that that's happening on our islands, especially when you go out to our neighboring islands in Micronesia. Here on Guam, but even more so in some of these smaller islands, you see the impact of, of sea level rise. These are real realities that we need to deal with. And yet, how do we move forward and balance protecting our environment, if not enhancing our environment for the future and the future of our children, our grandchildren, and all those that should follow, and yet also manage to live and function and grow as, as we need to as a society? And I think that's what we're faced with today with regards to the proposal that's been brought forth by Senator St. Augustine in moving this issue. And at this time, with all the imperfections involved, I believe that we need to move forward, because the consequences of not making those decisions, and I certainly don't think that someone like John Beneventi, who's invested so much of his life, that he continues to do, even at this time, John could have long retired. I'm sure he's staying on to, to see this project through completion, would, would, would do so irresponsibly or recklessly. Otherwise, why would he have invested so much of his time and his reputation over, gosh, probably close to 40-plus years at GPA? And I've had the opportunity to work side by side with him, and I know that he, he wants to see the best for the Guam Power Authority and the best for our community with regards to the services that GPA provides. So with that, Madam Speaker, I certainly appreciate the opportunity to offer this amendment, and I'm hopeful that my colleagues will, will support it. With that, thank you for the opportunity to bring this forth and comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Brown. On the motion, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing, none. Motion carries. On the main motion, Speaker Terlayo, recognize you on the main motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just wanted to put a couple of things on the record regarding this bill. We had a public hearing. It was quite extensive. There was a lot of testimony. We heard a lot of concerns regarding the health and, and safety of, of the surrounding areas of the people of Guam by granting an exemption. And it was very obvious that the exemption, I mean, that the law that we're proposing to exempt GPA from was put in place because of those same environmental and health concerns. So I believe those are very valid. Those should always be valid. And while GPA has assured us that this is a different type of plant, power plant, that it is going to operate more safer, it's going to operate within EPA standards, clean it's going to operate within EPA standards, clean air standards. You know, I just think that GPA has to continue to prove to the community that it is going above and beyond in that regard. And we might be the only place that demands that of them. I'm not sure that that is demanded of them when they go to the PUC to approve their rates. I don't think they look at, you know, is this, is this the healthiest power plant to operate? You know, or, or things like that. But I'm just saying. So I do expect GPA to answer to that type of thing here at the legislature. And, you know, so we did ask them some questions at the hearing. I don't think all of them were answered, but I do think we have received all the answers that they can give at this point. And again, I am concerned that, you know, we got here because there was a consent decree, meaning there was a lawsuit. Guam, I mean, US EPA sued the government of Guam and GPA because of violations of the Clean Air Act. In a settlement, that's where the consent decree came from. All the parties consented. They agreed, they settled. And they agreed that they were going to come into compliance. And so this $600 million project of building a new power plant in Ucudu stems from that. And we were going to close down the PD power plants, stop the pollution down there. And we were going to build a new power plant over Ucudu. The only thing that GPA had to come to the legislature for in, in building this power plant at Ucudu was the zoning. All the rest of the deal was done between them, PUC. PUC approved, I guess, the power plant, what it's going to look like, what the rates were going to be afterward and so on. When it came down for rezoning of that Ucudu property, I was a senator at that time. I was a new senator. And I can't remember, but I might have been the only one that voted no on that because they're building this gigantic power plant over the aquifer. And we were told at the time that, don't worry, we are building this over a part of the aquifer that is not usable or something like that. And so I asked them to put that in writing, that GPA agrees that this is where this power plant is being built, over a nonusable part of the aquifer. Anyways, I don't think we ever got that from them. But so that property is all rezoned for this gigantic power plant. And I just want to point out, it's, it's been six years since that rezoning. Six years. They've always known about the 2024 consent decree deadline. They did this procurement over the six years. $600 million of a deal. I think it was announced in the newspapers to be $562 million of a deal. I saw some financing documents of $600 million. $600 million is almost the equivalent of the government of Guam budget. And my point here is that this is a huge project. It should be treated, be vetted, be, you know, criticized fully because it's that big. And there's been very little opportunity to do that. You know, we're seeing some of the criticisms now because we, we get an opportunity to weigh in on PD, you know, or to refinance the bond, which is not directly related, but, but related. But anyways, I'm just saying, I think it's fair. The GPA should account to the people of Guam for the health and safety concerns. GPA should account for how in the world did this happen? Why did this project get changed after six years at least of vetting? And after a $600 million deal was already signed? It was already signed. And I want to believe them that this is a better way to do it. But I just can't get that out of my mind as to, then why wasn't that the way that it was proposed in the first place? But the things I want to put on the record is, so we asked them, what is this March 24 deadline, March 31 deadline that he refers to? And, you know, why do we have to comply with a March 31 deadline? And the answer from John Beneventi was that the price of the CAVIS 41 megawatt project will be increased after March 31. Although it could be still beneficial to ratepayers, the additional cost reduces savings to ratepayers. The price increase will be needed because of expiration of quotes, mainly on the engines to be purchased. As we all know, inflation is on the rise. The world is experiencing supply difficulties on almost all materials and parts needed. We have managed to keep the contract cost as is up to this time, despite the project being a loss to KEPCO due to high relocation costs and inflationary increase on project costs. And the magnitude of the increase would determine the viability of continuing the CAVIS project, which of course, in any case, would still require legislative approval to proceed. In other words, the costs will go up and they might scrap the project altogether because of costs. So I understand the March 31 deadline, I think, on this answer. We also asked, could they provide any documentation from EPA? You know, that it gives more comfort as to the proximity to the school and that the guidelines that GPA would be operating under? And I think the previous amendment addresses that. And that's pretty much the answer from GPA, that they're going to be complying with the Clean Air Act, that the EPA ambient air quality standards are going to be what they are required to operate under, under the consent decree. We asked the major source permitting versus the minor source permitting. They were not pursuing the major source permitting because of time deadlines, they made it sound like. And so their answer was that major source permitting would not meet the deadline of April 2024 for the consent decree due to the monitoring period of two years. So by building it, a smaller plant up at Ucudu and an additional backup plant down in PD, they would apply for a minor source permit that they would be able to get approved within the time period under the consent decree. I asked why they had not requested from EPA, US EPA, an extension of any of these, of the monitoring deadlines, you know, up at Ucudu. They build it major, a builder, the bigger plant and the major source permitting versus, or the consent decree deadline itself? And they said they had already been given an extension once, but must exhaust every option before they go back to the judge requesting for another extension. And they, they want it to prove they can do this, don't need to go into receivership. I don't think this is going to be the end of what we hear from GPA on this project. My understanding is that they also require, you know, some technical fixes in regards to the land. But I do hope, you know, again, we are being faced with this issue of, take it or we're going to load shed you, right? The rest of the people of Guam. Take it and we are going to comply with Guam, US EPA's air quality standards. We're going to, you know, and that will protect the children in the schools. And I think it's a very hard decision for us, you know. But I think with, given the time constraints that we have, the information that we have been provided, you know, we're going to have to do our best under these situation. But, but yeah. I just think it is incumbent on all, incumbent upon all the agencies of Guam to be forthright when they are presenting to the legislature and to the people of Guam. And I think it's very fair of us to ask for additional health assurances, additional assurances as to, are we sure we, we know what we're doing here? When this was not the first proposal that you guys agreed to during your procurement, which we hope is vetted by many entities, not just GPA and their engineers, but by the companies themselves, by the US EPA at the time, by the PUC and its consultants. But otherwise, I appreciate the efforts of the sponsor of this bill in, you know, getting us to deal with this. It has to be dealt with, you know. We don't, nobody wants to go back to load shedding. And I don't think, I, I'm hoping by this bill, that, that, those words and that threat are immediately take vocabulary because the people of Guam are investing $600 million into this. They have provided them land. They have provided them rezoning. They have given them bond authority. They have given them refinancing authority and the ability to spend the money pretty much however they want. And I'm just saying, at the very least, I expect if GPA comes in again for any other assurances regarding this deal, this $600 million deal, that they, they do exactly that. And they answer to the people of Guam for health, safety. They answer to the people of Guam for wisdom and changing the deal at the last minute. For, you know, we, we're six years in. We've got a deadline in one or two years. All of it. So anyways, but I do appreciate the efforts of the sponsor and all of us in the legislature to listen as much as we could to all of the testimony, to delve into additional meetings of GPA, get more answers as much as we could to do our due diligence in reviewing this bill and, and acting on behalf of the people of Guam. To this, Madam Speaker.
When Pobetsu, Speaker Terlayi. Is anyone else on the main motion? If not, Senator St. Augustine, would you like to close?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I appreciate the discussions we had on, on this substitute bill 213. And I understand the concerns. Go back to, let us support our people, especially in the south and pass this bill. It will let GPA ensure that adequate power is provided our southern families in the event that current power facilities go down. But more importantly, this bill will allow GPA to build within the 1,300 feet from the school. Cleaner, not just low, but ultra-low sulfur diesel will be used causing cleaner emissions into the air that are safer from what currently is being emitted from other CAVIS plants. I greatly thank you and my colleagues for their passion on this, on this measure. I humbly ask for their support and vote to pass substitute bill 213. And also, Madam Speaker, I'd like to add the following co-sponsors for the bill, such as yourself, Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munybarms, Senator Clint Regel, I'm in correction, Senator Chris Duñez, Senator Joanne Brown, and Senator Tonyada, and Senator Peter Terlay.
On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing, none? Motion carries.
I'd like to move the bill to the voting file.
On that motion to move bill number 213-36 to the voting file? Any objections? Seeing or hearing, no objections? Motion carries.
Thank you, colleagues. We have exhausted the second reading folder. And we will be moving now to the third reading. A consideration of the daily file. We will allow the clerks and legal to engross the bills. We will recess until Friday at 6:00 PM for voting. Friday at 6:00 PM, recess until Friday.